Thank you, good evening and welcome to the floor for our second main meeting. This evening we have two public hearings, first with the local board, and then application by restaurant. Then we'll run through our agenda, followed by the public courts, and then after we go back, of course, in the meeting, we'll open it up. We have questions, comments, and concerns, so if anyone here is old or unsure. So we're supposed to start with the local board.
Thank you, Deputy Sheriff. Legal notice Incorporated Village of Florahawke, notice of public hearing, proposal, law number two of 2022. Please take notice that pursuant to Article nine of the New York State Constitution, provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Florahawke, and the municipal home rule law of the State of New York as amended. A public hearing will be held in Incorporated Village of Florahawke, Village Hall, on 12th Boulevard, Florahawke, on 17th day of May 2022, at 8:00 p.m. on that day, in connection with the enactment of a local law entitled, a local law ed, adding section 99, dash, 21.2, to the Code of the Incorporated Village of Florahawke regarding transient rentals. This local law shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State by order of the Board of Justices Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, Susan A. Walsh, Village Clerk, and was dated May 6, 2022. And that the legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, and posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I'd also announce that the board previously adopted a negative declaration, meaning the proposed law has no significant impact on the environment. So this law is, is to prevent short-term rentals within the village. It's regarded as a transient rental, which is less than 28 days. It'll allow the village, if its avatar is on social media such as their BMB, HomeAway, BORB, will be able to find them, and the fines start at $1,000. So this is to prevent short-term rentals, less than 28 days. Is there anyone on the floor who has any comments? Is there anyone here, Village Hall, that would like to speak on this public law? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this public law? Tell me they should raise their hand.
We'll put it in the chat.
There's none? Thank you. I'd ask the board for a motion to adopt the decision to close this public hearing. So Ms. Walsh can you pull the board?
Trustee Combaugh, trustee chair, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Fitzgerald.
Aye. Ms. Walsh, I'm ready. Read the public notice for the application of 184-186 Jericho Turnpike, Florahawke,
Thank you, Deputy Sheriff. Legal notice of public hearing Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York. Notice hereby given that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, will hold a public hearing at Village Hall, 12th Boulevard, Florahawke, New York, on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, at 8:00 p.m. in relation to the following application. The application of Village AS Restaurant, Giliano Zuberen, owner of property of 184-186 Jericho Turnpike, Florahawke, for a special use permit under Article three, section 99, point 10b, for expansion of restaurant use in a B2 district. This application is made in accordance with Article three, section 99, dash, 10b one of the zoning ordinance of Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, which sets the permitted uses and special uses in a B2 district, and which provides that in a B2 district, a restaurant may only be authorized as a special use at a public hearing. The structure of which sets special permits applies to situated on the south side of Jericho, 180 feet east of South Tyson Avenue, and now this 184-186 Jericho Turnpike, section 32, block 60, blocks 256 and 257 on the Nassau County tax map. Copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Clerk, 12th Boulevard, Florahawke, New York, and may be examined by any persons interested therein during business hours, Monday through Friday inclusive, except legal holidays remain adhering to 8:00 p.m. Now take notice that all parties and interested citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard before said time and place by order of the Board of Justices Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, Ms. E. Walsh, Village Clerk, dated April 29, 2022. And that the legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Florahawke, New York, and posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau Planning Commission and pursuant to section 239, dash, L and M of the General Municipal Law, determined to defer to the village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I'd like to place on the record that the applicant had previously filed an affidavit of service, beginning in all names, within a two-inch radius, other knowing had been served with notice. I'd also like to announce that the board previously adopted a resolution determining that the application does not have any significant impact on the environment defined by the CBA. The applicant, yeah? Good evening. I guess if you can give us a quick overview of what you're looking to do. Could you be swaying?
This is my address. Can I have your address, please?
Pierre Monteberry, 507 Fajbogor. They have a restaurant. 507 Fajbogor, Minneapolis, New York.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So if you could give us a quick overview of what you're looking to do at your restaurant?
Yeah, what we're just trying to do is the exact same thing that we were allowed to do last two years. We set up a few tables on our property, the valuable patio section. We set up tables. We successfully loved it. We still make phone calls for it, and we just want to continue here. We're looking for months of major proposal, something like that, whatever, maybe. And that's really good.
And you said it's on your property? I had a little.
Yes, that's, that's, I think the restaurant is has a, you know, where you built the apartment, I think it's a 20-foot piece of concrete that we have. That, you know, we set up some tables, we put umbrellas. You know, it just, it was nice, and it was, it was worth it. People loved it, so we went to see it.
I'll ask the other programers to ask the other. That we have a violation.
Hi, Dorothy, thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Does the hours of your restaurant change at all to your outdoor dining?
No, hours remain the same.
And you're aware that the occupancy remains the same? You can't add patrons off the afterwards?
Yeah, that's what I thought. They mentioned that to us, so we were going to leave some tables inside to kind of, you know, fluctuate if it come for occupancy.
Well, do you see an increase in staff?
No, staff remain the same. I mean, the good thing about it is that the last year, you kind of had a test run of it. So you know that what we have to do is kind of set the standard because staff over the last few years, you know, you can stay the same, and it worked well.
Did you find that you needed additional deliveries at all?
No, just, yeah, the same. Yeah, because I'd even said, you know, it wasn't really more people, it was an added structure, so different atmosphere.
Are you planning any music outside?
No.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on the music, that's recorded or live, no music whatsoever?
Yeah, no recording, yeah, no.
Trustee Chair.
Yes. Are you planning on having an additional bar outside, or are you sort of? No additional bars, only the central indoor bar as the last years. Any anticipated increase in garbage?
No.
Probably the same.
Should be the same.
And will it be any, will you be using it for any party, parties?
No, it's only going to be for what we do, just sit down dining, reservations, you know, parties. I mean, maybe someone wants a party, like a table of 10, we'll do a table of 10. No parties this season.
Trustee Stewart.
No, I have no questions.
Trustee Longbody.
Thank you, Conley, for that.
Thank you. Just make sure you're aware that we have a crazy road project going on this year. We'll be doing Spooner Street and Spooner Street Plaza. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I did, I did.
All right, if you can take a seat, I'll ask the members in the audience that have questions. Anyone here in Village Hall have any question or comment on this application? None? Dolly, Zoom. Give us a sec. Thanks. Any final comments?
Only, only that it's very hard to hear you, that all of you. Back, back here, it's very, very loud.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have any questions, or this is that, that was it? I have nothing else. What, any further comments? I'd ask for a motion to reserve the decision on this and close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Walsh, can you pull the board?
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Good study. Ms. Walsh, when you're ready, if you can lead us through the general issues.
Thank you, Deputy Sheriff. I would ask for the approval of minutes for the regular Board of Trustees meeting held on May 3, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable as follows. General fund, $769,977.89. Home fund, $5,585.69. Capital fund, $24,457.23. Room rental of $800,020.81.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. I would ask the board to approve or ratify the requesting use public facilities subject to receipt of certificates of insurance and the CDC Department of Health guidelines as presented.
I'll offer that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to approve the below listed law party applications in accordance to section 32, dash, 12d of the Village Code and approval of the Florahawke Police Department.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to accept the letter of entitlement of police officer Robert Hedley after nearly 32 and a half years of service with the Florahawke Police Department effective May 28, 2022.
I'll offer that resolution with our appreciation.
I'll second. Second, and also thank you, Robert, for your service to the community.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald.
Aye, and Bob, thanks for your time and service to our village. Walsh appreciates it.
I would ask the board to authorize a refund of $250 to H. Penne at 24 Charles Street since his leaving department and application was canceled.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. I would ask the board to authorize the consulting services of Henry Alianis for the purpose of code enforcement services and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign the independent contractors agreement.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. I would ask the board to approve Paul Damacola to permanent status as a laborer since he successfully completed his six-month probation and want to graduate to become an NBL trainee since he has a CDL license at a contractual rate of $41,498, subject to a drug and alcohol screening and Nassau County Civil Services, Civil Service Commission's approval.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. I would ask the board to authorize department transfers from the contingency account as presented in numbers one through five.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald.
Aye, just hold me up one second. Is, everyone here fine now?
I would ask the board to authorize Jesse Rodriguez and Dalton Howard of France Innovations, Inc. on behalf of Horizon Files to solicit door-to-door from May 30 to June 11, 2022, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in accordance with chapter 47 of the Village Code and subject to review and approval of the Florahawke Police Department.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. I would ask the board to approve the Florahawke Fire Department to participate in Kellberg Memorial High School's May cramming on May 20, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. and to authorize the mayor to sign an indemnification letter where Calberg Memorial High School indemnifies and holds harmless the village and the Florahawke Fire Department of any losses, potential claims, and/or losses.
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Combaugh. Aye. Trustee Chair. Aye. Trustee Stewart. Aye. Trustee Longbody. Aye. And ma'am Fitzgerald. Aye. Finally, I would ask the board to approve the request of AAA taxi for a 2022 taxi cab license with sandy lambs and fingerprints and background check from the Florahawke Police Department.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The motion's carried.
That is the only one.
Second, Ms. Walsh. Now we will move on to public courts, and we will start with our deputy and our president.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming in tonight. First, for our fire department. This week, the Florahawke Fire Department Rescue Company in Village Ford honored longtime member and officer, ex-captain Marty Cook. Captain Cook has served the rescue department in many different capacities. He was an expert trainer for his department and developed departmental libraries for the members. He has served in an important role as hospital liaison. He's enhanced radio and technology operations to increase safety. And most importantly, he has saved many lives. We express our deep gratitude and appreciation to Captain Martin Cook and his family for his decades of voluntary service to the fire department, rescue company, and the citizens of Florahawke. As Captain Cook retires, we wish him and his family many blessings. To the rescue company who responded to 60 rescue calls in the month of April, in addition to 17 others that were serviced by other departments such as Nassau County due to the nature of the call or the location of our rescue truck being involved in another emergency, we thank them, the rescue company, for being constantly online 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and keeping us all in good care and in good health. And to our fire department volunteers, thanks to you for your mutual aid service responding to an Elmont fire yesterday that was caused by a lightning strike during Monday afternoon storm. Our department's systems was greatly appreciated. For the Department of Public Works, daily pothole repairs still continue. Please notify DPW regarding serious pothole problems that require immediate attention by calling them at 516-326-6320. Beautifying Florahawke are plant their boxes on Tula Avenue and soon to be coming the colorful hanging baskets of flowers on Tula, Cobra and Jericho. Also in May, many of our preschoolers and their families were delighted by this year's Truck Day celebration at the rec center, sponsored by our police, fire department, and DPW, as well as my first school. Children enjoyed seeing and exploring the Village of Florahawke's fascinating memorial vehicles, including our sanitation trucks, construction vehicles, fire engines, police cars, and more. One of an unforgettable experience for our children and for some of the adults, too. For the chambers of commerce and our businesses, with the beautiful spring weather and the longer hours of daylight, enjoy strolling through our business districts and window shop and casino our businesses have to offer. It's always time to shop and dine local in Florahawke's Stewart Manor as outdoor dining begins in many of our restaurants that we just heard about, the Willa desk. Both chambers of commerce are getting ready for their street fairs. Florahawke's on Tula Avenue on Sunday, June 12, at 1:00 p.m. and Cobra Avenue on Cobra Avenue on Saturday, October 15. Save those dates. And for our Conservation Society and Centennial Gardens. Centennial Gardens was at its most beautiful and best on Saturday, May 14, as the Emma Allison Katie Hands Family Foundation sponsored Emma's Mile 5K and Peewee races to everyone's delight. Well over 1,100 runners and walkers participated as crowds all over our Florahawke streets cheered them on. Sparkling medals and trophies were awarded to the first to tenth place finishers, and an exciting ceremony accompanied by enthusiastic applause for our winners and participants, many of whom were from Florahawke. The gardens looked spectacular for the Hans Family Fun Day, which followed with games, arts and crafts, photos, raffles, food, and so much more in a beautiful garden setting. Thanks to the Hans Family Foundation, the Conservation Society volunteers, village staff members, and many volunteer groups and individuals who lovingly contributed to this special day that honors Emma Allison Katie Hands and brought our entire community together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Combaugh. Before I move to trustee chair, is there anyone that's standing wanting to come down and sit for a couple of open rows? Trustee Chair.
So on Saturday, May 7, I had the pleasure of attending the Eagle Scout Corps of Honor for three really impressive young men who awarded the Eagle Scout distinction. Becoming a Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors in the Boy Scouts. It recognizes their many accomplishments with core values of faith, commitment, and service to others. All three from Boy Scout Troop Four presented themselves and acknowledged the mentorship, the support they received from their Boy Scout leaders, their peers, their families who assisted them through their journey to the Eagle Scout. Those awarded the Eagle Scout were Zachary Collado, Ethan Hallick, and Kurt Rudinbacker. Congratulations to all of you, all three, and thanks and gratitude to all who supported them along their way. All the best and good luck in your future endeavors. For the police department, this is National Police Week. National Police Week is a time for police officers, as well as all of us, to honor police officers who have lost their lives in the course of duty. It allows the country to honor their sacrifice, remember their good deeds, and show support to their families. Citizens and civilians can celebrate by showing appreciation and gratitude to the police officers around them. As I always mention, we in our village are very fortunate to have some professional, dedicated police department keeping our community safe. Our department will always have our support. We appreciate all that they do and continue to wish them to be safe. For the building department, on Tuesday, May 11, the owners of Centennial Hall Properties, the Freeman Group, presented their request for variances for the Centennial Hall project. Residents who attended voiced their concerns about the project. We are currently awaiting the ZBA decision on the variances.
Thank you, trustee chair. Trustee Stewart.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to extend a special thanks to all of those volunteers who were involved in Saturday's Hans Family Foundation Family Fun Day. It was really wonderful to be back at this amazing community event at our beautiful Centennial Gardens. Thanks also need to go to our DPW and police departments who make sure everything runs really well behind the scenes. I offer my congratulations to the runners and raffle winners, of which I was not long ago yet. Maybe next year. For our recreation department, Lily is in full swing as is tennis and many other fun programs. Please check the recreation website, get full details. Last week, the Recreation Center had its annual registration night for its summer programs for children. It was a huge success, with people lining up hours before. Spots are going quickly, there are still some spots available, so please call the rec center if you're still interested. Registration is a full length of the pool. At this time, we have over 80 more family memberships than at the same time last year. Summer '22 is looking to be one of our best yet. Remember, opening day is early this year, Friday, June 3, at 4 o'clock. Sign up now to be there for our first jump event with the TJ and some other special fun events. For the Long Island Railroad and the 3TC project, work continues along the sound wall on Charles Street. There is some access work happening at the dead end of Main Street, Oakley-Feld Avenue. Thanks go to the efforts of our village administrator, Mr. Bamberk, and the board. We are monitoring the work, and we are trying to mitigate any negative effects for our residents. Next steps include planning for beautification at the following locations, Tunnel Street, Main Street, and Hanover Streets. If you have any questions or concerns about the 3TC project, please email me at jakestewart@fpvillage.org. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. And I have to say, living on Charles Street, the walls certainly make a difference noise-wise. It's a lot quieter, and I'm surprised to see how much better it is to just actually add something to the character of the block. Trustee Longbody.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. For the Florahawke Library, the library is very active gender for kids and adults, continues with scheduled events and activities. Some of them are a game night for grownups is a 10-week program. Bring your own board games, enjoy the company, conversation, have some fun playing your favorite board games. Project Hope offers free, anonymous, and confidential support with coping tips, information on community resources, and more. No registration is required. May with Love Mini Group is a night of conversation and chat with the works. The program brings together people doing something they love for a good cause. The items they make are donated when charitable organizations need. The Young Engineers Program this month, they will explore the galaxy in the Star Wars theme label shop. Good Vibrations Tuning Therapy is a relaxing program to restore balance and health. This is a two-hour program that you can register online before the library. Other programs include yoga, storytime for three- and four-year-olds, arts programs, playtime for six-month pre-k, and English language learning classes. You can see all these and more at the library website, www florahawkelibrary.org. And for the Four Village Studio, the shows covered in money include the author corner with Stephanie Markin, inspiring stories with Bill Corbett Jr., Uncorked, and others. Some featured shows on Florahawke, PD, Village Focus, some rights and wrongs of a car stop, what to do and not to, and FP PD Behind the Badge with Lieutenant Will Darby discussing an active shooter situation and what to do. Once again, you can visit the website, www foursbs.org for dates and times, as well as a complete list of the shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee on the body. For my report, just real briefly, I reiterate what Deputy Mayor Promani said and Trustee Stewart would like to thank. All the volunteers and our village staff who put in tremendous effort to make Hands Family Fun Day such a success as it always is every year, and it's great to see it back the same as it was before the pandemic. And then also Deputy Mayor Promani and I were privileged this week of having our local third graders come in to learn about the village. It was a wonderful time. We met with them for about a half hour and they toured through the floor, police department, fire department. And I'm sure if I was only limited, if I wasn't limited to a half hour, there'd have been a lot more questions, every one of the 40 or so had questions. It was really good entertaining and the future is bright here at Floor Park. And thanks to the teachers for bringing them all with the location. With that, I ask for a motion closes the portion, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank Brandon Duffy from Down and Down, Mr. Pax Media for being here. And as always, Felix and Mr. Pax, we thank you very much. With that, I'd like to close this portion of the meeting of all but for comments. Yeah, motion.
So.
Second. One, bear.
Aye.
Thank you. So the full audience here, if you know what it is, if you want to approach the audience, take your name, your address, and the trial listeners, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns that.
Thank you, Robert Moran, 7th Avenue, 17th Avenue, Floor Park, New York, 11001. I'd like to speak and share information, hopefully gain some information about the appeals meeting on May 11th concerning the Centennial Hall. There was a couple residents that attended the meeting, not many, not too many knew exactly what was going on. Just in terms of that meeting, do you know procedurally when possibly they have a decision rendered?
I don't know. I don't know, but I would suspect it's.
Okay, and then within the next month or so, what would be the process after that decision is rendered through for them to move forward? If they write the variances, just if you know, I know you're not on that board. I'm just trying to gain information and share information as I know.
Assuming what, was approved or disapproved?
If it was approved.
If it was approved, it would have to go to the A R B, or the texture review board?
Okay. Okay. So at that meeting, I learned that Centennial Hall, which is approximately 18,000 feet, is to be torn down except for the front facade. And now the builder wants to build a 2,727 apartment complex building. I believe he was approved, and anybody feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to give information and I'm trying to gain information. He's already approved for 18 apartments, right? He's supposed to keep the facade and he's, I think he's allowed to have 39 spots. But because of the enormity of his new project, because he's going to build 27,000 square feet, by village hall rule, he has to have 54 spots. Is that everybody's understanding?
John Ryan almost tried to push it, right?
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Sounds right? Yeah, I just want to be valid, I don't want to be wrong. So he's seeking variances for a number of things. He's seeking a very, oh, and I'm sorry, and he also wants to make two curbs, have two driveways on the side of Carnation, so that he can have ingress and egress in two portions. One where the current driveway is, and one down by where the light is on Carnation. I'm not sure what he's seeking variances exactly for, like I was at the meeting. I know he's seeking, I believe he's seeking a height variance.
Yeah, I think it's the three things, for the height of the building, the parking spaces, and.
And the size of the parking lot. And the size of the parking lot.
Two minutes.
Okay. All right, so when I spoke at that meeting, the review board dismissed the concern, frankly dismissed the concerns that I had. And me and two other people spoke, but one of whom was my wife, so it wasn't, wasn't so good. But when the next guy got up, he said, nobody knows about this. And they intimated, oh yeah, no, everybody knows that this is going on, just nobody cares, that's why nobody's here. So I just wanted to make a point of telling people, because it's apparent to me, nobody really does know about this.
So can I address that? Can I address your.
I don't have a question. You know, people don't know about it.
Until there's a process that every.
Right, there's a legal notice, we're good. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm just sharing information. So if they're telling me that nobody knows about it.
I'm sorry, what?
If they're telling me that nobody knows about it, I'm not telling you that there's not a process that wasn't here to.
I didn't get a.
Yeah, all I'm saying is people didn't know about it. So the process could have very well been here to, but people didn't know about it. I think most of these people are here because now, now they know.
Can I just address the process, are there any of the process?
I don't know if that, just in a matter of six months, I'll stay here all night, I'm very concerned about this issue. But I don't think, I don't know if too many people are concerned about the process. If there's a 200 foot radius, is it the two?
All right, so I'll just address the process.
Sure.
There's a couple things. Everyone could, and this is for every zoning meeting, right, every zoning board hearing.
I, I have a process.
It's 200 foot radius, everyone gets a notice, and they have to serve us with copies of the notice that was served. It was on our website and it was in the official paper. And one other side note, Trustee Chiara, I let hope we didn't go through the process, but that's what happened.
Yeah, no, I said I'm not questioning the process. So if we're going to talk about the process, we'll keep on talking about it. No, no, I'm not. So there's 32 people that live at 5th Avenue Street. And people are upset with the process, it's because there's only one certificate receipt of mail. And it wasn't mailed to 5th Avenue Street. So there's 32 residents of Floor Park that live at 5th Avenue Street.
I think the 5th Avenue is.
Lot of it.
Yes.
So the process of the term, I think that's the process, and then those two.
No, 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 I'm just, you wanted to talk about the process, I did not. Right, they wanted to talk about the process, so you opened up, talk about the process. So I know that there's people that weren't comfortable, I have no problem with the process. I saw the mail receipts, but people did not know about it, and that's a fact. And one of the reasons why people didn't know about it, there are 32 families that live at 5th Avenue Street. And one family went out to Hat Hogg at Tulip Corporation or something. And these people had no clue that this was going on. So again, this is none to do with the process, I'm not against the process, I don't even want to talk about the process. I'd like to move on to other things, but there's 20 people that didn't know about it. And I'm not going against the process, but again, if all these people had known, they might have shown up on Tuesday, May 1. Right? Or Wednesday, May 1.
Correct.
At the previous meeting.
Correct.
I've spoken about this before years ago, about a number of concerns that we have as a neighborhood. Not just because I live on Avenue Street, which is right by Carnation. There's a number of things that have been on it, or the police chief before, he was able to get us to do not enter signs because we live on a one way street, and that has lessened our problem, even our problems. So without a doubt, and I thank you for that. So here's some of the safety problems that have been before, I believe on a different administration, or maybe some of you guys don't care how much. Carnation is a one way street, I'm sorry, is a two way street, right? It was northbound towards Jericho Turnpike, and it's southbound down towards the other end of the pool. So for lack of a better term, it goes from Adelie to the railroad, right? That's, that's the southbound one. And on that, we don't have a congestion problem. On that, quite the opposite, we kind of have a problem, people going at a good rate. When I say good rate, you got to be good, they go rather fast. On the other side of Carnation, which would be the northbound side, that's where we have a congestion problem. We've always had a congestion problem. And I just would like you guys to know that even without having, the one at the drive, which you asked me for two, even without having one at the drive, we still have a congestion problem. And I'd be like, oh, we're congestion problem, okay, you know, what's the big deal? It's very dangerous. It can be very, very dangerous. So if you're traveling, northbound on Carnation is a life, and that's where they're looking to put the next driver, okay? During wash hour, 10 months out of the year, September to June, when school's in session, that always gets back up. Specifically in the morning wash. And when it does, it backs up, so when you get down by the Adelie, that's Florence, and then you walk up, and that's one way going out of town. And then you back on Mont Street going Adelie, that's me, that's one way coming into town. And then it's literally that's a dead end. When cars start to back up past Adelie Street, they have a habit of going down the wrong way down Adelie Street.
Or driving on the washroom.
They do a lot, they do a lot of it with this, but this, now, if I had a guess, I usually witness it about six to 12 times a year. And the do not enter signs that the chief of God first were great for helping not go down the one way street. But there's two types of people that go down that one way street. There's the type of people that do it by accident, and there's the type of people who do it on purpose. And yet, those do not enter signs has definitely helped stopping the people who do it by accident. Specifically if they're heading north on Carnation. I might have some people, because we do get Amazon, Amazon delivery people, whatever, coming down the Hoover Drive, is it okay?
Yeah, I want to mute.
Go.
Yeah.
I love you, Jack.
I get it. Sorry about that.
No problem. So your daughter and say, nobody goes the one way down. Who's wrong is that? Who's wrong is that?
Yes, Tony, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Are you on mute?
Am I on mute?
Yeah.
So I don't think so. I'm good?
I just started. I just muted, I was trying to make sure they're coming on mute.
Yeah, without on mute. Sorry, Ms. Grant.
No problem. Slide 7 is dangerous. Carnation's dangerous like plainfield, I would say that we're actually more dangerous than plainfield towards Jericho. We've had at least one, maybe two big trees planted on the corner of Adelie Street and Carnation, and they're no longer there. And the reason why they're no longer there is cars have gone up on the sidewalk. Danger, danger, it's a very difficult crossing, you have a number of elderly neighbors. I have a number of elderly neighbors all over, but specifically 5th Avenue Street that I love and care about. And many times, we can't cross the street. And minutes, if they have mail or anything like that, I'll take it and I'll try to cross the street. Kids, I've never tried to cross a kid across the street. However, there's been a number of times when kids are playing too close to the corner, or you have all the teenagers hanging out on the corner. I tell them to leave the corner. And that was your kids, all three of our kids. Mont Street, this one on the right, right on the corner, right where we lost that being a trick. I said, you get away from the corner, he said, oh, okay. I told teenagers, I had a group of teenagers tell me that they can hang out wherever you want, I'm not talking about that. I'm trying to save your life, because I don't want to car go off the sidewalk and harm you. It's, it's, it's. It's the electric dam burst me since we lost a nine year old boy right off of plainfield. Plainfield traffic is just like Carnation traffic. It was in a next minute driver around wash hour that drive off of plainfield, they drove up on the sidewalk. We have dangerous conditions. We have dangerous conditions here that are only going to be exacerbated by the development of this property. I just want to share that information. Thank you. All right, so now back to the meeting. When I went to the meeting, the limited liability company had speculated, for lack of a better word, that the building wasn't structurally sound. He just said it wasn't structurally sound. He didn't provide an engineer's report, he didn't provide an engineer to testify. He just said, it's structurally sound, so I need a variance to build 27 apartments as opposed to 18. Uh, well, he said building materials, building materials are causing an economic harm. And I tried to mention that at zoning board, just because it doesn't make sense to me. If building materials are causing an economic harm and you have to renovate a structure, why in God's good name would you not get down? Why would you tear it down? If you want to stay one on building's material, you could leave the structure there and build within it. He then relied, the limited liability company and his attorney relied on the traffic report to say that there would be no increase in traffic with 27 units and at least 37 apartments. No. Do you mind if I vouch this out to you guys?
Yes, fine. Those.
Well, good.
Yeah, I have a.
Yeah, has anybody seen, I'm not holding any, has anybody seen the traffic report? So what happened was after the meeting, I figured I'd go down to the buildings department and I'd see what was going on. Because they kept on referring to this traffic report, they were referring to the traffic report. Traffic is going to be okay on Carnation, because they're referring to the traffic report, the traffic. So I go down to the buildings department, and I have a look at the traffic. And basically says, you know, the open paragraph, I believe I highlighted for you guys, is that the proposed redevelopment is not going to result in significant impact on the roadway network. And by describing the roadway network, he's talking about Carnation primarily, because that's where the two directors are. Okay? And when it goes to the proposed project, I just highlighted the proposed action will involve demolition of the existing Centennial Hall building to facilitate the new apartment building with 27 units. Now after that, it says, within the proposed action, there will be two access driveways on Carnation, and not only one coming in and one going out, meaning two driveways, in and out. And he likes that for his property, because it's good for the people and his building, not necessarily good for us. Now this is very important here, where it says area traffic volumes, because this is the basis on what the report is based on. They intimated to us that there won't be a problem with traffic on Carnation because of the area traffic volumes. Now, I had told you before, we have problems with traffic, with congestion, usually 10 months out of the year. There's two months out of the year, we don't have a problem with congestion, because nobody's going to school, teachers aren't coming into town. So the rush hour is really, really not that bad during the summer. So since they checked out, they did a review of the N Y S D O T data from August 2018. They chose August, there's 12 months out of the year, two of them we don't have a traffic problem, and they have to pick one of the two. It's amazing, but wait, there's more, there's more, it's even better. So in the next paragraph, I don't know, I'm sorry, right with the August, right after that, you see where it's highlighted? Where it says, for this section of Tulip Avenue is 9,815 vehicles per day, right on Tulip, right? And this is still under the heading of area traffic volumes. Now in the next one, it says a review of the New York State D O T, again from August, but now this is 2019, is on Tulip. And it says 8,980 cars per day, you all see that? Right, and then underneath that, it says with a total of 577 vehicles in the P M hour, right? A total of 577 vehicles at the P M peak hour from 5 to 6. Now nowhere in this area of traffic volumes does it mention Carnation. Not once. Now they mentioned Carnation in the report. Oh, yeah, they do. And they tell you that right up where it sits, proposed project, the proposed action, you know, sorry, withdrawing, forget that. Let's just move over to the next page. Now there was no mention of Carnation, right? This study, this traffic report that they referred to at that hearing over and over and over again, which only has Carnation, now that, which only has Tulip, not Carnation. Now they bring it up at the very bottom where it's highlighted, the last, last line. The peak hour and an increase of 10 trips relative to the 577 vehicles traveling in both directions on Carnation. Now they mention Carnation, but it's not based on Carnation, it's based on Tulip. And I didn't know this when I saw the board on Wednesday, but I don't think they would have really listened to me anyway. I just wanted to bring this to your attention, okay? This whole report is based on, if you just go to the last one, the conclusions, this site will generate 10 to 12 trips, and however they figure that, there's no answer letter documentation about why this site would generate 10 to 12 trips. But again, it says with a little teeny increase in the sent area traffic for volumes on Carnation. I just want to point out that this study, the traffic study is flawed, and this is the ball that is to file those variances and to get the 27,000. You guys have any questions for me? No?
So I do want to talk about the process a little bit. So the zoning board, it's an independent board. So this board has no jurisdiction, we can overrule them. You know, they're members of our community that, you know, that have mostly been on that board for a long time, have seen a lot of cases.
Yeah.
You know, we do trust them with that.
Look, I trust them infatively, I don't trust the limited liability company. And just because the zoning board dismissed me, I hope that they know what they're doing. But I was petrified that they wouldn't know this, but one document that was filed in the buildings department, that's an error. And why would it be an error? There's two reasons. Why, they only do a study on Tulip, but then they mention Carnation. You're either negligent or you're fraudulent. Those are the two charges, so.
So there are members on that board that were very, very involved with us with regards to the third track came in and at the old Delano Casino, what was there now. So they definitely take everything into consideration, that they know what to look for, they're on the other side of this. I trust them that they do the right diligence and review every document they get and what they.
I hope it's pretty solid for the safety of our residents, especially our elderly and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just another note, too, I'd like to add to thank you for pointing out the number of safety concerns that you have that are not necessarily that close jurisdiction, that are this close jurisdiction. that are this board's jurisdiction.
Good evening. My name is Jim Nolan, I'm resident of Florah Park, 68 Brook Street. Been here about 38 years, somewhere around there. And I am probably just as guilty as a lot of people in this room today by getting my news of Florah Park from Facebook. I apologize for that, sometimes you get late news, sometimes you get inactive news. I heard you speak about the process. I think that for a project of scope of this size, to notify anyone who lives within 200 feet of the project is probably ill-advised. I think that referring to the paper, the town paper, which I don't think anybody gets a hard copy of anymore, might also wind up being ill-advised. I think that posting it on the website, while it's probably maybe as much as you can do, perhaps maybe a mailing to all concerned citizens might wind up being something to consider in the future. I know I hear mailings from senators of New York about free lunch programs and, you know, everything else they waste money on when it comes to mailing, when it comes to something like this, I think that we probably should have put up a good job of notification. So, for what it's worth, I think, you know, that that's something I want to hear and concern.
So we just had to answer, we can't pick and choose which projects we're going to change the rules for, so...
Well, so I think maybe you can though.
Well, yes, you can, because it's broke.
I think the common sense would prevail and say for something of scope this size, we ought to rebook or reexamine that and say, if it requires a certain number of square feet or it requires a certain change, obviously, this room will tell you today that that's an unpopular decision, so we probably should look at that. You had made comment before, it said that the architectural, I'm sorry, is the building department that made this?
The zoning board. The zoning board's hearing is for the zoning board.
So who does the zoning board answer to against non-yorkers?
They're an independent board that makes an independent decision.
They may answer to the voters, so how do they get their position?
We appoint them.
And what do they appoint?
Every, every year, reorganization. And it actually is every five years in a row takes, so usually there's one person pretty much every year.
I can give you some anecdotal evidence, like commute to Manhattan, I drive every day, I'll tell you that it's insane, that takes me 15 minutes to get out of Florah Park, which, anyway, will tell you that fucking down Tula Avenue will wave at that light. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that the light would have changed in New York State driving where they messed with the lights on Tula, that made them stay red longer so pedestrians can get back across the streets, but certainly seemed that the lights are redder for a very, very long period of time, which, and then they greened for a short period of time, so, you know, you can be waved down on, near the railroad, can get all the way up and this light opens different lights, and that, it sounds like a small inconvenience, but, you know, would only add to the frustration of commuting into Manhattan, and I think that's something that, you know, probably should have been taken consideration of, and I don't know if it was, if, what my fellow residents said was true and they did this road study based on August, I mean, that in itself is probably an indictment of how the system goes. I don't know if it was true or not, but if it was, to think that during August, only August, when, you know, sometime occasionally a lot of traffic by 30%, plus in addition to everybody else that's going to school, I think that, you know, again, that's something that just simply doesn't make sense. So, I don't know what the next process is, I'm sure that at this point in time, hello, I'll be the first to tell you, you are right, we are all here tonight because we have finally now heard about what this was going to do, and everybody has stood up and said that doesn't make too much sense. And so when it comes to a variance, why do we have variances in the first place? Why do we have laws if we're just going to say, okay, there's variance, they have to walk? There's a reason that we have the high requirement for Florah Park, because we like this community the way that it is, and to go over 10 feet on a building where somebody asks, that doesn't make too much sense. There's a reason why we're in this mess in the first place, because when we bought the building, we had no clear idea and intent on what to do with it, then we bought it, and now to get out of it, we sold it to a real estate developer who's going to knock the building down. I think that if we all decided what we wanted to do with this building, we'd be much more in favor of knocking the building down for Florah Park, which kind of a wrong building to want to have.
We had a number of public consultants about what to do with the property, we hired an outside consultant to come in and, you know, address some of those things, and I don't know if you care.
I would only know that over a long period of time that happened, and like a lot of residents, you fall in and out of interest as you hear the process going on. We're here now because now it looks like it's fairly complete to be able to turn this into a department building, you know, taller than, you know, perhaps maybe what a lot of people like. So obviously, you know, we're here today probably to give you as much pushback as we can to be able to see if, you know, this process is now pretty much done, or what appeals, if any, are available to the village, and what perhaps will be the next steps we want to be. So, I realize a lot of evidence I have is anecdotal, I'm, you know, I think a lot of people talk about it the same way, but the more I learn about it, the more I understand about, again, the process of the notification, about the studies that are done. I don't know if there was a traffic study that was done by a traffic, now again, this gets into their domain perhaps indoors, but a traffic study that was done over a significant period of time, had just one month going through the summer, and certainly not during COVID, that takes into effect what, you know, a real traffic period should look like from morning to night over a busy day. And that consultant or traffic study should be paid for by a consultant that we agree to, funded by, obviously, the applicant, and then shared with everybody who goes to the city today, I think is obviously something that, you know, we go and be in favor of. So, you know, that's my two cents, I just wanted to come down, I learned about it tonight, came down because I heard about it, saw about it, thought that, you know, anybody that finds it, there's support to find out what comes next, you know, very much would be in favor of it.
And so technically, what comes next, if it's approved, would be a hearing at the architectural review board, which will definitely, this will be kind of, definitely not anytime this month, right? It'll be at the earliest, the June meeting, which is June 22nd.
The architectural review board, right? Say, yea, 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 the project?
No, once the zoning, the zoning board says yea and yea are the three things that they're carded for, then if that's approved, if it goes forward, the architectural review board has a whole host of things they can do on how it looks, feels.
So it's still under the consideration of the zoning board?
No, it's still, right now, yea, it's, zoning board has not made the decision yet.
Okay. And is, does the zoning board have commented, or is that all we've been hearing?
Uh, Mr. Ryan, it's qualified.
So they wouldn't make any additional comments?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
My name is Charles Smith, 53, Florence Street. So I'm really close to this site.
Is that in the mic?
I don't know about, actually, until today, my sister, she actually texts me because I'm doing social media stuff, so, she texts me about, she's in Vermont, and we grew up in this town, my whole family grew up, moved out, moved back, you know, I found a house, I'm happy with the home, you know, I love the community. You know, like, remember this town, and it says it's Florah Park, a great place to live, right? It's not going to be anymore. What was this? I can't, I can't even fathom something, because I was in construction my whole life over at Union Plaza. Now, the plot of land is like an angle, right? So, how can, how was a contractor to do 27 units? Republican, the guy goes, on the clean side, they build a building, which is like, Fegazi contractor, and he has no, he has no authority in that. So all, all those people, when they start filling up that, that building, they're coming on my way here. And now, now we got this, I mean, I would much rather this unit ever roll out there. You can see, I'm really happy, I get a constant flow of shopping carts coming down my block, you know, I went and got a nice police door, actually, because the hotel is right behind you, and, I don't know, are you in this situation? Or you, you must, oh, anything, somebody, somebody, what are we doing here? This is my office, you've done, it's not saying that one. So, the zoning board, can I give a name on it? I'm like my doctor fights. You know, I'm a chef. I, I, you look familiar, by the way. So, I know where you are, I know time, I went to school, I know time. It's, it's saying you're good, it's, it's going to be good, you know? So, so probably have a big crack for a crack, right? Sure, I'm taking it. I'd say no, I'm, I'd say no, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Board, I'm James Spallock, 31, Roger Place, Florah Park. I want to just bring up two points, one is Mr. Moran, what I've been wanting to, that he made in a comment she made. He may have mentioned that last week, when he was here, and mentioned that there's only two or three people concerned about the hearing last week, that the member of the zoning board said, listen, we did what we did, the process came, it must mean that people don't care. I can tell you, and I think I speak for a lot of people here tonight, and I'm as negligent as anyone else here about not knowing about the project, but I promise you that everybody here cares. So if the member of the zoning board felt, listen, the people just didn't care enough, as they said to Mr. Moran, that's not true. So in any way to convey that, while I know it's a good point, and the hearing is closed as the town attorney mentions, so our comments will never reach the zoning board, but I'd like this board to know that these people care, and the comment that my friend, Tubas, I know, about the 200-foot radius, I guess this is an example of maybe revisiting that on some, more importantly, the deputy mayor, I think is a very important factor, when Mr. Moran talked about safety, and she said, well, tell me, that, well, issues of safety are things that this board could consider. And I'm thinking about his examples of north and south on carnation. Having lived in a larger place for 38 years, obviously, I'm very familiar. If you are heading south on carnation, coming down Old Little Parkway, let's say by the building, and anybody who fears right to go up the ranch, if there's a driveway at that light, or a little past the light, let's say, fifteen feet past that light, where somebody who lives in this new apartment building can make a left turn to go home into that apartment, anyone who thinks that's not a recipe for disaster is crazy.
Exactly.
You're going to tell me that someone come and grab that building, go up carnation to the home, is going to stop and make a left turn, backing up everybody coming around like that, to even make a left. To either make a 90-degree right up Florence, or obviously continue up carnation and stop there, holding up traffic, which can only increase the possibility of a car being secondarily, coming northbound, northbound, okay, I think we can agree that the traffic on that road is getting worse and worse, and I think you notice now, I have said it many times, there's two or three years, even the traffic at Rush Hour, even on Jericho, Plainfield, up Tula, it really increased a lot over the last four, five years. So you're coming down northbound on carnation, heading out to go to Jericho. You've got people stopping, coming out, you're going to stop traffic for somebody to come out. Remember now, as we're talking about that place now, nothing much goes on there, right now, this evening. You have 27 families living there, 54 spots, that's like two cars a family, let's say, in and out all day, if anybody here is in and out of a bed at their place, it would be no different. The amount of possibilities for accidents at, at safety is increased dramatically, and if this board has authority about that, God willing, I hope we can see that it's, it's just going to be increased a hundredfold, and we don't want to wait for the first fatality or God forbid, I've passed or anything like that, say, you know what, this is a bad idea. So those two points, and if you, if the board does have something to say about the safety, I, I think those examples, I think, now, I'm sure there are more, than you can think of, stopping traffic, and then lefts and rights, in and out. Anyone ever said that to anybody here before, someone ever put driveways there, ever said the trucks? It makes no sense.
Just to tell you, if I could add something on, the concerns about the in and outs of driveway, we have another project, I'm sure you know, they're just going through this process in the village now on Corporate Avenue, where the fire took place, and they are at the architectural review board, which is the next step process, and they've been, the developer there has been through two sections of architectural review boards, there's part of approvals of the building in many different facets of that building, and the second part is what's called a site plan review, and Mrs. Barker, she's our building department supervisor, please correct me on this statement, but the architectural review board is now taking a whole additional time to consider the in and outs of driveway space, specifically the site plan, because residents have expressed over there so many concerns of where the traffic is coming in and out, how it's going, and mentioned the exact same things on streets that are not as busy as carnation, but nonetheless, they're named on the streets, so they have some concerns about that, that was, is being reviewed by the architectural review board.
Because if you, you, take that, I don't want to, just think, what are the carnations, all the time coming, you know it. And now you say yourself, oh, guys coming in and out all the time on carnation, guys making lefts, across one lane, you say, that's, that would be crazy, it would be very dangerous. Last one thing, I'm damaging, what is the town's official newspaper, I don't think it's there?
The, uh, I don't know, this is on the, no, pardon, sorry, and it's Plain Slate Media.
I'm sorry, I heard that, so I didn't mean to interrupt. Press Height, 23 Remsen, along the corner of Remsen and Florence Street, the right across street from Riley, who voiced this, we got an opinion a few minutes ago. I'd like to know which by, local government by, regulates parking regulations on the local streets, so I'm talking Mount Remsen, Florence, Adeline, and Rogers. The reason why I'm asking is because we're already under pressure and under siege, and we'll continue that, when new development across Jericho becomes often fully operational, people will be parking on the local streets to walk across Jericho, because there is no parking for the parks. So who makes the rules for the parking today?
So it's in the village code, it's four hours, we do have the ability to change that, and we have changed it for a number of streets. I believe Florence is two hours, right? Two hours, we have the ability to change it where it's necessary, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes what happens is we have two hours, it also affects residents.
Look, having that, is it having hold, or are you discussing, modifying the regulations that are in effect, if this variance goes through, or when the building gets built, are you planning to change in the parking rules in the local area to this development?
We absolutely consider that. Again, the project hasn't been approved or disapproved, but we absolutely can change parking, parking emptying, as the residents there, that live there want that.
Well, my position that I agree with, so...
You would not want...
I would not want to relax parking regulations on my street during the day, to make room for more cars because there's more population, Phil.
I think you want to make it more secure.
No, I do not want, that's why I'm asking, do you have plans to augment the parking regulations on the local streets as they are today?
At this point, no, but we can consider it if needed.
And will that opinion be afforded to the residents in the local area to voice their concern?
Yeah, with the law...
Or against?
Yeah, so that would be a local law change, so, like, the seat, we went up below the transient rentals, it would be the same thing, local law, have to change, change it up.
So I would have the ability to weigh in on that decision?
Yes.
Before it's made.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric, I'm at 25 Rose Street, and I've been a village... I routinely, it used to happen maybe once or twice a year, but when I try to make the left-hand turn, when I'm southbound on Carnation by the Dairy Belly, I have routinely passed on the left. I routinely observe people making, running through the red light. It's scary, and the thought of having an outbound traffic that could either be making a left or a right, just as nineteen, in any way, like it's gonna enhance our quality of life, our safety, it... You all drive on this road, correct?
I did.
And now, I mean, I can say, if they had a one-way entry and a one-way ingress, that we could probably make it work, because if you're going with, not with that many cars, but I'm just saying, in terms of just practical consideration, I'm not out, no, unconcerned, because again, they changed after the fact what they committed to. Now, I don't get away with that, right? I don't get to put bigger pool in than what my building permit said, or, you know. They purchased something, they didn't get cheated, they knew what they were buying, they made a commitment, and now they don't like the deal they made, and we're being asked to pay the price for that, so that's true, right? My number one concern is the characters of neighborhood, and the state, I don't know, the apartments that you guys built, what is that, South Side, they're attractive, they're not taking anything away, they have parking, you know, I understand, not everyone can afford a floor parked house anymore, and it's a shame, but that's where we are. But it's a mini triangle on our two busiest roads. I probably wouldn't feel this way, this is over by Centennial Garden, but where it is, it's completely impractical, and I really believe I'm safe here. So that's what I have to say.
Hi, my name is Lynn Calaris, I live at five Adeline. I wanna further to her point, there are eleven garages there, right south of the deli, west of Carnation. When I go into my spot, I have to go right by the deli, people are coming either southbound or northbound, off Carnation hogging at me, I can't even get in the garage. My neighbor is in the first spot, exactly there, she has to try to back in, or she comes off by nature, goes into the deli, waits for the traffic to stop, looks, backs in. It's dangerous as it is right now, I can't even imagine, there's no way those, those people could get in. Unbelievable, so please do not let this go through.
My name is Jacque Donahue, I'm in Montree, I am a Flore Park Belros School District Board trustee, so I'm here speaking about the impacts that will have on our school district. Right now, we have new apartments at the Harson, these will be new apartments, and the district has allotted for the eighteen, but to add nine more is actually a very large burden on our district. It, it would seem that we have a lot of space, because we have two new extensions in most schools, however, we are packed again. Just in this next coming school year, we have to add four new sections, two in Flore Park Belros and two in John Willey, so we have to find the space for the children that we already have in the district. While I understand that these apartments are not meant for people with families, it's inevitable that families with children will move into these apartments, and how many children will move into these apartments, and twenty-seven units is a very big deal for our school district. So I would appreciate it if the board could weigh in on that with the Architecture or the zoning board, because I think that, just in the best interest of our children, it is, it is much more than I think is realized, nine additional units. I also am someone who tries to stay on top of what's going on in the village, but have grossly failed when it comes to the village board, and I apologize for that, and I feel that there is, while we do have the website, and we do have the newspaper, I feel that it is a discussion that I hope you will have, to look outside the box. We've done that in the school district, where we now try to use social media as much as possible, there are a number of mailers sent home for the budget vote tonight, we do use the paper as necessary, and it is on our website, so it, it is an evolving process that we are continuing to have, but I hope that the village board will also look at the process and try to change it as necessary, because more people are looking at things on social media and not in the newspaper. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Maggie Sando, I'm here on that, I'm at... I first wanna point out that I respect about the danger of the intersection, which is very true, but we also should be pointing out that the intersection north of that just north on Carnation is labeled as a dangerous intersection with no lights, and it has its power line placed, and then Landscabun comes in on either way, and then people are flying down Carnation from the light on Flore Boulevard, and the storage facility is coming out, and the empty trucks, but you know, that's just for the back of your mind. I'm just gonna have rhetorical questions in here, I hope, I know it's not a Q and A. The villagers have been a part of protests change and progress, so much so that some wonder if we've missed out on residential incentives from New York State. When finding these issues, trustees, constituents, hired experts, all spoke on the quality of life in this quaint village of Flore Park. They spoke on traffic issues and impacts on the local environment. This is a change worth fighting for. We fought all those other changes that we had really little power in, but this is the change we have power to stop at a local level. No amount of tax revenue will fix the congestion on Carnation, no amount of tax revenue will build the time machine, so the Flore Park Belros School District can recapitalize population valves, can rebuild extensions to accommodate huge uncoordinated residential changes. Constituents need to know, who is the freedom group, and why have they been able to get this far in the process of changing the scope? What actually happened historically with the sale of this property in regards to the village, as the supplement gentleman had asked about? Why should we take pity on the developer who has miscapitalized their profits in order to make a good deal? How can the store that's close to the planned dates switch the entire time? Neighbors cannot get a variance to put a porch on their house, citing a status, but we can have a monster building housing more residents and more cars congested to a right congested road. Carnation is the main way to enter and exit from most who live west of Carnation. Tulip is constantly congested, they have a terrible intake light system, and now UBS are in the traffic. When there's an accident, how will people get out to Jericho who lives west of Carnation? Does the ARB have the authority to permit driveways empty out onto Tulip? I'm pretty sure no. Can we, can we just give them their money back? Who has the final approval on this? Do constituents have the power to force another review and ask for further appropriate studies by independent groups? Will the board consider changing the parameters of greater notice when, sorry, this is later on, I started taking notes, sorry. But will the board maybe consider changing the perimeters of greater notice when the scope of a project is larger than the usual residential projects? I also would like to offer that the village is very effective in sending emails when there's just no storm or a barrel pickup. Why can we have no publication, why would we have no publication to rely on, such as the Great Way? Would you not consider your already established email system for news like this? And then more on the process that we have all kind of been questioning, you've been very gratefully given information on. Who has the power to pull the plug on this project? And does it, do you ever have a say as the Board of Trustees and the mayor? And yes or no, and I'm not asking that in a sarcastic way, like, are you, are you able to say, like, "Hey, zoning, sorry, you did a lot of work, but we don't like where this is headed"?
That's my question, we don't have the authority.
You have no authority.
Not to override zoning.
So the zoning board is like, is independent, they're them, they make the final decisions?
That's right.
So John, what about...
I think it's the final decision.
Yeah, what about...
But if we decide, so when we decide we wanna fight the barrel, and the town gets behind it, and the villagers get behind it, and it's a really important thing for us to do, you guys make that decision? Because it's not for the constituents, right? Who is the one who decided we were gonna fight the Belmont Casino? Just the constituents?
Yeah.
And then the trustees kind of helped?
Exactly.
Okay.
There was a task force.
Yeah, there was a task force.
And that was independent of the Board of Trustees in the village?
No, it's a little bit different, right? That's us.
Versus the state? So what do we do when it's the town versus the Board of Appeals?
Or versus the...
When it's constituents versus the town zoning board? What do we have, like, what power do we have, when there's people that just found out about this morning, were willing to come here and say, "This is no good, this is ridiculous", understanding that you really are at the, you really have to get the zoning Board of Appeals to finally say, because that's not works, right?
It's established by the law of the state of New York, the village law of the state of New York gives the zoning board the authority.
So what power do the constituents actually have?
No.
It doesn't matter what, as to, as to...
To fight this.
I said I'm changing the laws.
At this point in time?
Ask for the law to be changed, with the...
They change the zoning laws themselves.
The procedure is like, you hang an application, the zoning board hears it, you could come down and propose it, and then the board will make a decision applying the standards that are set forth in the village law, as to...
You can private it.
Or a variance.
So I can be told that my silent air conditioner cannot be put on the side of my house, but, because it, because they decided this, right? And I'm not trying to be facetious here, like, I'm trying to call it a menial thing.
Then you could come down and ask for variance to put your silent air conditioner on the side of the house.
Correct, I was denied, so, so what I'm saying to you, what I'm saying to you, I'm really, I'm not trying to be facetious in any way, I really, I really love to get to the bottom things, so like, if I can't do this, because of some menial reasons, why would this monstrosity, this problematic thing, this ill-studied traffic report, all of these things, why would they be allowed and be approved, if something as menial as the air conditioner couldn't be?
Again, the question assumes a lot of things that I don't necessarily agree with. There was a hearing.
That no one about?
No one, no one asked.
There was a hearing, the applicant provided the notice required by law, and then the held the hearing as performed in accordance with law, they'll consider what was presented, and they'll render a decision applying the standards that are set forth in the village law. That's how it was done, just like it was done with your variance application.
And the five, six other things that they heard, that, I think those six, seven other things that you thought they had...
We can't, as constituents, even ask for a second hearing? There's no sway that the village board has...
There has to be no rule against... There's no, there's no process for that, it's not provided.
But it's not a law or a rule, is it?
It's in the village law of the state of New York.
The people that appoint them could clearly ask them, because clearly there's enough concern about safety, traffic, and everything else, and nobody knew, I live on Rock Place, I got a flyer put in my door, that's the only reason I know about this.
That's true. We need to know.
Eric, this is the one, I'm an infrequent one coming to meetings, but this is the most I've ever seen in any of these meetings, by ten.
I can only tell you what the law requires of what was done.
The law requires it, so we're asking respectfully to have another meeting where the public can voice their concern.
If, if the zoning board approves it, the ARB will hear it next, and anyone in there will come down to that meeting and discuss it.
But Eric, why didn't they get that law? They were already approved for X, now they're asking for Y.
Can you approach the podium?
I would. Sorry for the... At ear cam thirty, Ron. As I told you on the infrequent, I've been here yesterday, two different boy scouts or whatever, a boy and I did. I'm outside the 200-foot radius, which is a bunch, you know what?
It's too long.
I know, but we'll talk about it another time.
We will consider that.
But the fact is, I get a flyer, and I'm thinking it was you, I don't know, put it in my door, yesterday, it's the only reason I do it, it was, I mean, that already happened. So I respectfully, and I think everyone else here would agree with me, that we request a second hearing of the actual zoning, because there's clearly, I mean, how many people have you seen, times you've seen this amount of people on a subject matter in your meetings? Not me, right? Okay, so we, I think, do I speak for all of us? It's a public hearing, because what I think kicks up the people up too, is that the decision is made in private.
Right.
That's concerning. Who is the zoning board? Is it, is it public knowledge?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't they sit in here the next, another time, and we get to voice our concerns? It shouldn't have to be forced to the next step, and then if it goes beyond that, then everyone has to pony up and go after a legal battle. Why would we go that far? They've already been approved X, just because they wanna make more money, that's not fair to everybody else in this town. They got what they wanted, they're just crying poverty now, because they didn't have enough so they could make enough.
I think it's...
It's clearly a fault before people ever, so thank you. And that, I mean, I mean, that's gonna be a very bad intersection that you guys, your guys are gonna feel, so.
We already have a bad intersection every day.
Yeah.
I have it in my family, so.
Try parking, and those parking garages.
Answer your question. Answer your question. Unless Mr. Ryan disagrees with me, we do not have the legal authority to request a second hearing.
Is there a law against this?
Excuse me, but could you address it from the safety concern that the residents have expressed you...
I'll, I'll go second, second, that's why I answer.
But is there a law that states we cannot request it?
You're not requesting it.
Yes, I am, but is, as the town lawyer, is there a law on the books in New York State, in Flore Park, in Massa County, that says we cannot request it? And be, and given that...
There is, there is no law that says you can request it, and that request has a process like that.
That's not what I asked, I said, if I ask, is there a law that states we cannot get it?
Is there a law that says you cannot get it?
Yes.
There is no such law.
Right, and just because there's no law that I can't request it, doesn't mean we can't request it. And, and the board can make it happen.
No, that can't happen.
How is that? They appoint the board.
That's not...
I don't know, I love how you shake your head at us, we're pissed.
There's no law you can answer.
We didn't do properly.
There's no...
They didn't do properly, they didn't, they didn't...
We don't have the legal authority to request another zoning board here.
Okay, so, legally, we could ask them, again, because clearly there is concern where they said there was none.
No, who says?
They could say, the board, the zoning board could say, "All right, we don't wanna be..."
I can't...
But if you request it, because you could say, "A hundred plus people showed up, because they're seriously concerned about this project." Act like a mayor. I mean, is that, I've heard of, I mean, I'm the first, they can't, why can't they?
Is this law, we do not have the legal authority to...
You're not legalizing it, you can request it on our behalf.
Mr. Ryan, this is not your question, yes, Mr. Ryan.
Why is it that they cannot request it? I'm just curious.
You're independent board, this board has no authority to intervene with that board.
You're not intervening with anybody, you're asking for a public hearing, the public is requesting it, and they are also, as the independent, but they still work for the village.
We don't have the legal authority to request another zoning board here.
Okay, so, uh, legal, but we could ask them, we again, because clearly there is concern where they said there was none.
No, who says?
They could say, the board, the zoning board could say, all right, we don't want to be, but if you request it, because you could say a hundred plus people showed up because they're seriously concerned about this project. Act like a mayor. I mean, is that, on, on her oath, I mean, I'm the first.
He can't, why can't he? Is this law? We do not have the legal authority to.
You're not, you're not arguing it, you can request it on our behalf.
Mr. Ryan, this is my question.
Why is it that they cannot request it? I'm just curious.
You're independent board, this board has no authority to intervene with that board.
You're not intervening with anybody. You're asking for a public hearing. The public is requesting it. And they are also as the independent, but they still work for the village.
I'm telling you, it can't be done.
So can I fold up and request it? Or anybody here?
You can send any, any of the questions. I can't tell you not to request something.
But if we have no recourse with the zoning committee, do we have recourse with a safety?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we would like to raise this as a topic for a future meeting because we have serious concerns about the safety of our community if this project goes.
So as Deputy Mayor mentioned, which regards to the project on COVID Avenue, similar concern raised with the ARB unit, which will be sometime either in June or July. There's, there's, I don't, I don't count. Catching, catching the shy. There are people on Zooms, I want to acknowledge them and I want to see if there's anyone on Zoom that'd like to ask a question. Uh, I don't see a chat immediately.
Says a notification required by the law on sufficient to meet to go immediate tonight.
Thanks. Anyone on Zoom has asked why the comment, they raised a hand, so we'll just.
I'd like to propose to the village, look at the corner of Carnation, sorry. Look at the corner of Carnation Avenue. And Carolyn, please for official stop sign prior to proposed construction. Mary Ellen has some questions.
Do you want to, do you have a library? Good evening. If you state the name and the address. Thank you.
Here we are. Um, I got a little detail, just trying to catch up here, was my understanding that the project and the project were a presence of service, I'm not a ten, three hundred per person, because that building is going to come down, and that building is going to collapse. And it's my understanding that it's already past, uh, zoning board, that they approved the project?
No, 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 they heard the, they heard the applicant and the residents that came to the meeting last Wednesday, they have not approved or denied, there's no decision.
Okay, so there is no decision. When, what is the process when we reach that decision? Is rather, do they now need privately acknowledge any information that they obtained, and then they give a decision and then announce the decision? Or is everyone just having a process to make a decision than that?
They'll take everything into consideration, including, I'm sure, reading the transcript of what happened that night, um, and then at the next meeting they'll announce the decision. Is that correct, Mr. Ryan?
Don't doubt that there'll be an issue, issue represented, let it be issued publicly.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear, Mr. Ryan.
He, it's written and it's published, right, Mr. Ryan?
Well, it, it's, it'll be issued, it'll be posted, we'll send it out, and it's decided.
Okay, so, there is no decision, there is no decision, right, so yeah, then all of us, uh, can, we all of us, we still have concerns, right, how concerned they to the zoning board, to get them before they make their decision, so that they can hear all of the possible situations that they may not have thought of or may not come up.
The, the, the hearing was closed, so comments are no longer accepted, and that's the way they, that is the rule in the law. So any things?
So, uh, a big, um, concern, please consider comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, as, according to everybody else, then how, how we're aware when the zoning board was, how we made aware, we can share.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Superintendent Walkers wants to speak.
Okay, so there are safety concerns, traffic concerns, U S egress and site plan concerns that can be addressed through the ARB. Zoning advantages?
Yeah, so when she said, yeah, so Superintendent Billings, what he wanted said that any site plan, safety concerns could all be addressed by the Architecture Review Board. The zoning board was specifically for the three things, because of the size of the apartments, the parking, and the height of the building. Those specifically, so the traffic concerns, egress and ingress, egress, all that, any other concern people they have, can absolutely be addressed at the Architecture Review Board meeting.
Well, we don't have, we don't have any chance to weigh in on other three items?
That's, at this point, at this point, fine, that's correct.
Okay, so I, so another question is, how, what, which is, the zoning board for the town to, to propose, or let everybody know what is actually going to happen?
So the, the process is everyone within 200 feet radius of the property got a notice, written notice, which, I don't think she joined earlier, but I'd like to ask her, that's it. You're welcome. So there's two, everyone within 200 feet, and this is every request that goes to the zoning board, no difference for this one from any other one, with a 200 feet radius, everyone within notice. It's on our website, in the schedule, all pending agendas posted a couple days beforehand, it's in the official paper, and separately at the last board meeting, trustee chair during the board review, walked through the history of the process and announced that it would be heard and one day a lesson.
Okay, so you have to be at the, so we have to be at 200 feet of the project, and you would have to be at the last meeting, which, this is, we don't get to.
And that's, that's, that's something, and that's, you know, trustee chair, you know, vote beyond, was required to announce that.
Okay, but I, I would like to think that they have to live it, going above and beyond, so not, not doing beyond the bare minimum, would be ideal, I mean, even in a small town, you hear a lot, your room is compared faster, not less, so it's a little, um, it's a little upsetting that only 200 feet, so you're, little, they only tell you with a 200 feet, it seems a little bit less like, let's do the bare minimum, which is, which I want to push back from just.
The, the law requires we are going to consider attempted changes, and they have a right here.
If you get that, if you future of a little bit of positive beyond your full box, if it requires, if it's a little bit of quality on, your courtesy of our neighbors, you will maybe sort of, maybe the way to go, or maybe four, maybe five, so I would like to see a little bit of this, on this yacht, that they, not just bare minimum. So I have three concerns, um, there's a big, terrible comment now, and that's my topic of the day, is the safety concern.
Okay.
So I guess we'll all have to, right, our safety concerns, and hope that the probably beyond the zoning board, how many members are on the zoning board?
Five.
Our shade is in the head of five people. Okay.
So you say to give, again, your safety concerns can't be addressed at the Architecture Review Board, when and if that happens, is it approved?
I'm hoping that the zoning piece here, uh, concerns on the comments are officially reported, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Schneider, I think you were next here.
Tomorrow.
You want to all test?
I doubt that. There's no way that happens.
All right, Kurt Schneider, 30 Florence Street. Good evening, good to see you all. Um, three points to make, I think I want to make. Uh, one is I've been on 30 Florence for 44 years, my family and I, and probably my next stop is Doris. So before, before I get to Doris, I would like to get a park in front of my house, particularly on holidays and weekends. If you can have 27 apartments there, you can have families and friends and guests visiting them, which, okay, but guess where they're going to park? They're going to park on Florence, they're going to park in Adelaide, and we're going to have no place to park on the weekends, okay? Because the two-hour limit is not there on weekends, so, uh, I don't think that's right, all right? Ready to hurt some people here tonight and before, that's all right, then we'll let the air out of their tires, and then the chief is going to have to deal with the situation over there. That's what it costs you. We cannot have people on weekends park in front of our houses all day, every day. So that's the first point. Second point, this Gilman area, great mayor, fourth from the right down there, he bought this sucker many, many years ago, and we've been through three mayors, and then we got the fourth mayor, and we're still nowhere with this thing, all right? We're still nowhere with this thing. And it's a monstrosity. It looks awful, it came down Tool Badu today, all of the wind screens on Tool are off, they're flopping in the wings, it looks terrible, you can't walk in that side, you can't ride your bike in that side. It's terrible.
I don't miss something.
It makes safe falls and God's city like a palace over there. And finally, the last point is, I don't know if this is reasonable to do this, but why don't we cut our losses, buy the sucker, make the auction on, all right? Charge, charge every family in Florida Park, 25 bucks a year for the next 10 years, 15 years, tear it down, put a museum, put some benches in, some nice trees, leave some parks in the back of Adelaide, move it in the home.
Hi, Brandon Hristovich, 158 Forest Street. So most of you I know, and I've been in this community my entire life, I've raised my family in this community, um, the one thing that I found very insulting is when you say to us, the Architecture Review Board is appointed by you, but you have no say over them. And they're independent aside. And my problem is, I feel like we keep going around in a circle because you just want to say, that's the law, you don't, we are asking you, the people, all of us who voted for you, who live in this community, who love this community, to listen to us and understand that we're not happy about this. And we don't want to hear, that's the law, we want to hear, okay, how can we work this out as a community? How can, when we're upset and we come to you, say, we have no jurisdiction? It's really insulting. What we can do is vote you out, and that's not what we want. We don't want to turn this into that kind of argument. So please listen to us when we say, this is something, I feel like Florpark is turning into Forest Hills. Okay? It doesn't look like the community I grew up in, that I love, and I know there's change, and we need change, but we also need the integrity of this community and our neighbors to be able to respect and live together and know that everybody is working for the same thing. And that's all.
Hi, there. Hi, good evening. Nancy Rose, 178 Bullock Street, um, Florpark, I'm a plus forty year resident of Florpark, I grew up in Florpark, I work in Queens, trying to get out of Florpark in the morning is a nightmare. It's one of the hardest parts of my commute to get to Kew Gardens, I, I work at the work, she's mentioned Forest Hills, I work for Kew Garden Hills, I work at the private preschool, special ed preschool, just across the street from the site where Fire was, one-story building is now being replaced by two stories. The developers trying to get eight stories. And it's the same problem, tiny spot, no parking, terrible construction site, traffic, unsafe conditions, trying to get out of carnage avenue in the morning, seven o'clock, is a nightmare. Trying to get back into Florpark, coming around down past the deli, because the light stops there to make the right, people on Jericho don't know that they're coming around expecting to make that turn. It's dangerous, as it is. How is traffic going to come out of this building, onto Carnation? To make a right, there's nowhere to go in the morning. To make a left, you're holding up traffic in both directions. I try to get up to Jericho, make my left to get up to Braddock, I can't do that because people are turning down Florence, trying to beat the traffic at that intersection so they can get past Jericho to get past up to the crosshander. Just as if it's the same light, I sit, end up sitting behind people in the same light, it's the same, it's no different, but they're holding up traffic because they have to pass that terrible intersection. That intersection is dangerous as it is. It's a nightmare. There is no way to keep this safe project with adding that many cars to this already dangerous situation. If you want to, you know, review the process, sit on Florence and watch those residents have to deal with the project. Sit in Carnation at seven o'clock, come join me, I'll be there tomorrow morning. The city wants to move your car and wait to get through that intersection. Come back at 3:30, 4:00, 5:00, trying to get back into Florpark. It's a nightmare, it is terrible. And the process, you know, that you're following the law, it's covering a lot, honestly, in a lot of ways, and it's terrible, and I'm sorry that, you know, I had to be notified to my neighbor on the next block over who was getting their sidewalk done. This is a slightly bigger project, and the village should know about this as a whole. So the 200-foot radius doesn't mean anything for how to this, like this, it affects everybody. So, thank you. Tricia Markins, 126 Carnation Avenue. Um, I just want to add to what people say about Carnation, I'm not going to lie about the project, I understand, um, maybe a little question about that, maybe, but Carnation Avenue is getting worse. I've lived on Carnation Avenue for the last 18 years. This week alone, I've seen at least two, probably three cars going around on the wrong side of traffic to pass people who they felt were going to go to Florpark, Carnation Avenue, one lane in each direction. Um, I'm walking, I'm walking with my son, I'm walking with my dog, on Carnation Avenue, in some places, there's not much of a buffer, um, toward any more traffic to that, it does back all the way up, sometimes almost to Catalin in the morning, sometimes further. It's very difficult to get around in that area. Um, so let's drive from this project, which is going to exacerbate it, I think that that is something that we need to look at as a village, and the intersection of Carnation and Tool at Florence, bad intersection, difficult to cross, difficult to navigate in the car. You could be waiting at the light, at the red light, um, on Carnation, turn onto Tool, people will drive up from several cars back on the wrong side of the road to make the left on Florence. You know, coming down to Tool, onto Carnation, you're asking for driving. We need to look at that. The ship has sailed on speaking to the zoning board, then we need to look at what we can do, which is look at the streets and the intersections there. And then my other question is, you keep saying that the ARB can't address our concerns, but if our concerns are with the scope of the project, that's already going to be decided by the zoning board, right? So that ARB can make changes to the appearance, but if the zoning board approves the extra height, that's a done deal. If the zoning, I mean, the ARB can go back and undo the variance, turn it on, correct?
Correct, but they can make changes that mitigate a lot of the issues that have brought up. I think that Deputy Mayor Martin said, with experience with that on COVID Avenue, doctors can saw it, we've had a lot of concern issues and complaints about it, and when the ARB met, they have, they were able to develop a lot of the issues that came up, have been mitigated, the versatility of both the ARB and that's on COVID Avenue. And we've had to assess that.
Michelle, 152 Bellford Street, former of the Forrester, please. Um, so I've lived in Florpark my whole life. Um, I think that the size of the project, because we understand, I think, the process that was followed, I think, although we have to also address the issues that have been highlighted by this process that are affecting the town, which is, one, the dissemination of information to the residents needs to be improved. Uh, while we have the website, I, I find it to be very difficult to navigate, um, I find that there are flyers and mailings sent out about, uh, what I would say trivial issues within the town, but something that a much larger scope like this is not moving into the people that live here. When we lost the gateway, we kind of lost that, you know, we. When we lost the gateway, we kind of lost that, you know, weekly source of information. And we need to find a way to bring people back into the process. By saying, well, we sent the letter out and we sent it to people that live 200 feet away. Sorry you didn't get it, is not really enough, right? So that's one issue. Changing that when the scope of the project is not residential, more people need to be notified. That's one. Two, information needs to be disseminated to the people that live in this community who clearly care about it, who stayed here for, what I heard from everybody coming up here, 20, 30, 40 years. They obviously care about it, they're invested in it. Our families are here. We've chosen to come back to live here to raise our own families. So for the zoning boards even saying in passing, well, people obviously don't care, is disrespectful. And obviously, we know that if we had known, people would have shown up, right? So how do we get better information? How do we ensure that in the future, we don't run into an issue like this again? And as our previous speaker said, how do we combat the issue already? Because we already know that now there is an issue. There's a safety issue, there's a traffic issue. And it's not just on Carnation. It's at multiple entry points in and out of the village. It's only been getting worse. It's amplified by the remainder that was built. This is another strain on our resources. So those are things that you can deal with, right? So those are the things moving forward that I think we need some effort to make with. So I hope that we can see that happen in the future.
Yeah.
Francis Christian, 114 Nancy. I just want to thank my neighbor, my friend, too, totally nice night. I also didn't know. I'm not doing that forever. Thank you for doing this wire because I'm totally ready. I'm also from Queens, and this to me is kind of like a last straw. I mean, we lost that, we lost the casino switch, you know, now the whole development over there. And now this is changing the scope and the landscape of Floral Park again. And I just feel like we're shipping away at Floral Park and what makes Floral Park so great. I do have a question for the lawyers here in that I looked up the Nassau County Government website regarding the variance. And not only that can the hearing be held on multiple days, but even after it's closed, it can be reopened. So I don't know what...
I don't know what we've looked at. It's the Nassau County that doesn't apply to the Village of Floral Park. They're under the Village Code and Village Law of the state. Nassau County and other...
Yeah, if you want, then why don't you send me that? Because I looked at New York State too. And it basically says that if it's deemed necessary, the hearing may be reopened at any time.
Sure it says that.
So what area of the law in Floral Park are you looking at? Because I couldn't find anything.
I know it'd be your name by the sentence.
I just said Francis Christian, 114 Nancy Avenue. I find it highly unlikely that Nassau County would have something different than New York State's Flower Park. Highly unlikely.
Our code is saying pretty much that every Village Code in the state.
Yeah. Including Nassau County.
We'll certainly research. We'll certainly research the county government, Nassau County. Code, Village, Flower, Park, Government.
I understand, I understand the whole thing. You know, I also understand that I feel like all these people are getting the brush. So it's a little frustrating as a resident, including Mr. Moran, who went there for Smith's. I can't believe that. I honestly can't believe it.
Please. I'll try to be sure. Given the case, I'm on 196 Carnation. I've been there for eight weeks. Sorry. I'll try to answer any questions. One, is there an email list that puts out a monthly, weekly report of what's going on in the city from administrative level? An email against the last thousand people that want to have it?
Yeah, we do have an email list that we do put out certain things.
Would it include any of the board meetings? Architectural Board Review, zoning?
So those are all scheduled at the beginning of the year and they're on the website. And the agenda is all posted a couple of days in advance, I suppose, to be honest. So if the Carnation is booked up, there could be something going on on COVID, you might wish.
I hear that. And I think we've all heard that. Question, and again, I'm new here, so please, you're...
It's a great question.
I'm looking to you. What I'm asking is, that is very much putting the ball always in the civilians' court. We're asking, can we be reminded just a touch? It'd be great to have it on a monthly basis. Hey, here's what's happening now that things are scheduled. Now, from our understanding of it, this is something important to be timed up versus looking at yearly calendar and having to come back to that meeting. Second question, and this is more directed toward, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. To you, I'm sorry. The zoning documents, were there any provided for this last meeting that showed like a zoning document?
They're all at the Village Department from you, we give that to you.
So, second question, that would be, for those of us that do not make the trip over to the Village Department, which I also believe is the public worst shed. Is there any digitization of that occurring prior to a meeting?
Not at all.
Do you think that's a possibility going forward for people so that they can readily accessible understanding of what's going on?
Quite possible, yes.
I think that'd be important because what I see is a lot of people that are active stakeholders in the community. And they really want this to be part of the process. And communication is the first part to not feeling like they're left out and not feeling angered or feel like the walls have pulled over their eyes. I work in the architectural field. I just want to get a sense of what the scope of the changes. I've seen some old documents that were passed around quickly by people showing up on the street with their phone. I'm trying to get a view of what really is Floral Park. And I want to get it from above as well as from the street. And I'm just trying to have the best understanding of how life has, as I stay here, going forward. So I appreciate the time. I know this is not the most fun evening. Thank you for coming.
That's fine, that's what we do for a lot of us, right? If I can explain. I agree with you. People, I had to say, like one of that kind of like public service announcement. I believe most people here live on the North End, which is, you know, roughly north of the tracks. We do have civic meetings, civic association meetings. The North End meeting is a Thursday every month where things are discussed. We answer questions, we get insight, and, you know, upcoming events will always discuss. Just another avenue to please come down. You know, again, one of those things that's widely attended. We would love to see a bigger attendance at those. It's more informal. We do get a lot of good feedback from people. And we can take ideas and start a development. But the event is one, not just a project, but just in general. It's really an important thing. I know there's some people here that in this room that have that sort of feeling. And, you know, I hope they would agree that it's probably something that's worth your time to come and be part. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ina Kara, 3 Nancy Avenue. And I think one of the first things that we need to take into account is the fact that this is not just affecting the people that live across the street from this construction, or soon to be construction, whether it be Florence or Attaway. We are one Village straw. So you have people sitting here tonight that are from streets far, far away from that particular aspect. And that just goes to show you are interested and concerned in keeping this village the way it has always been, okay? I've been here for 44 years, and I have to say that, putting aside the safety issue, and everyone's mentioned this there, spot on with, if you're coming out of Atlantic Avenue and you want to make a left, and I brought this up at a meeting, you're going under the Tresser. That's a real hardship, okay? So now you're going to add a little further down in Carnation, this Accorment Building from the lago that it were. So now you're going to have the problem of coming out of Atlantic, especially at Rush Hour. Okay, so try to go through there with the MTA trucks that are parked under the bridge. A person coming out of Atlantic wishing to make a left onto Carnation is putting themselves in a precarious position, right? Are you familiar with what I'm...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so now we're getting further down the road, this building, okay? Let's put the safety issues on the side. Does anybody honestly think that this is something that's going to be a beautiful sight entering into our region? I mean, seriously, is it going to be beautiful?
It's an earthquake.
I mean, they might as well have put tacos out there.
Yeah.
Absolutely, some of the architects we work with, because they have a copy on how things look and feel.
I'm not even, excuse me, sir, I'm not even talking about the choice of siding, but the fact that it's going to be a behemoth, okay? Coming into a village. Are you familiar with any incorporated village on the North Shore that can come to your mind right now that has this when you enter?
No. There is none.
Okay. The other thing is, I was a Queens girl before I came here. And I lived in, it's called North Flushing, Oregon, Dale Bay side. You go there now, you want to talk about parking? Are we trying to emulate that? People that have homes there have to double park, and they have to bring their low street views to their house. So now you're talking about quitting of this edifice, this, what'd you say, 27 apartments?
I believe that's what they're...
Okay, somebody has a baptism. I had 45 people at my children's baptism. Where are those people going to park their cars that day? I'm on Nancy Avenue, and people park on my street to take the railroad. So certainly, it's going to be a bigger problem with this edifice. And it's always perplexing why the town didn't keep it, use it for some sort of venue. We have children that are going to the library that they can't fulfill the library programs for the kids that they like because they don't have enough room. So what would have been such a horrible thing to have kept this? Made it into a beautiful community center for your seniors, for your young children. You want to make a little project? Okay, maybe you rent out one or two of the rooms to maybe a particular group or club. But you know what? Is this really going to beautify Flower Park? Is this maybe something to say, wow, this is really attractive? Or this is really beautiful? Tell me.
I don't have an opinion right now on it.
Have you not? Do you live here?
I spoke my...
No, I'm not trying to be flip. Please, understand me, but you're coming into a town, okay? You're coming into a town, and the safety issues, they are at the top of the list. At the very top of the list. So I'm saying, I'm not putting that on the back burner, but on the front burner, it has to be too. Look, we have young couples, young families in this town that have tried to beautify their homes and have been denied variances. Well, you're three inches, you know, too close to this wall, or you can't build that on this wall. So these people that are doing this, they'll get a pass? I'm not trying to be flip, but I'm trying to understand what was behind this. Again, could we not have kept it? Could we not have used it for some sort of multi, you know, functional purpose? Again, senior citizens, you have, you know, a youth groups.
So before we sold it, we had many meetings on this, public meetings, that discussed all the various ideas.
Right.
Nobody came up with anything, right? Used to be a ball field, used to be a ball field before they built the signs and...
I'm just, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, if you want to achieve the status of northern Queens, and it's right, believe me, it's right. Nobody's looking to move their, you know, boy? Their taxes are cheaper. But once again, you're going to have your 93-year-old neighbor pulling her car up on a main street on Mill Boulevard, or Walker Bell, or 35th Avenue between Francis and Lewis Street Tokyo, trying to get her grocery there, okay? You want to be Queens, that's fine. I didn't move here to be Queens. I moved here because it's a beautiful community. It's community minded. I love my neighbors. And I have to tell you, I think you're going down a wrong path with this. I really do. Thank you.
We'll go to Zoom. John, how are you? Did you make your address? Shrub. Not to my knowledge, right, it's not, it's not, it's not. I asked, it always is like, you have a penalty to answer that, it's not. Oh. The question is, if the developer asked to buy your property, and if he was to buy your property surrounded it, would there be a notice of that sale?
No, there's none. It's private property.
If it was a private property sale from one individual to another, or LLC, there would be no notice. That's just a private sale. Okay, thank you. Just to catch the order? No, sorry. In the right ear. Please.
Hello. I live at 200 yards, maybe? I didn't hear about this unless someone told a blogger in my...
I'm sorry, she's stating her own thought.
Oh, my name is Ina Ruiz. I lived here for over 20 years. And I don't understand how this could actually go through. Everyone lived here because they wanted a community, a family community, where you could cross the street and the car would actually stop. Because when I first moved here, people would stop. You've gone out Carnation now, and it's like, get out of my effing way. I'm going to run your ass over. I've always thought that they should just put speed bumps there now because it's just gotten so crazy. Even at night, it used to be really, really quiet down here. I don't know where these people are coming through, but they have their radios blaring, and they're doing about 50 to 60 miles per hour down Carnation. And I also travel to Yonkers, go to work every morning. And just as everyone's walking, the traffic is insane. And it doesn't seem like anyone gives a Carnation rat's ass whether we have to worry about this traffic and the safety issues. But I would think how they were approved for 18 units, and all of a sudden, oh, their pockets, what is it? Our pockets don't matter? Our neighborhoods don't matter? Our lives don't matter? Only the person's building? Like, there's so much more important than us as communities, as all the people here who loved Flower Park, who lived here, who moved here for a reason, to get away from all this craziness. Nobody seems to understand our predicament. We're only worried about the architect, the person who bought the property. Why should we care about them when we already gave them a contract? It's not, they said 18 units and 27 parking spaces. That was not enough for them that now they have to sit there and go, oh gee, you know what? I'm not making enough money on this. So their pockets and their lead pockets are more important than people who pay taxes here? Our taxes are insane, and we don't have the voice to say, hey, stop this madness, cut it out. I have people that I've seen, because I woke my daughter in the morning, which I happen to be related with four of them, so crazy, like... And I, and my very happy daughter, I don't know. They're not much, that's the way they are, they're totally fine. But they are going to all kinds of stuff. And I'm taking for a session, the light doesn't work half the time on Carnation either. It's pitch black.
What, light doesn't work? I hate all the traffic.
The street light.
Okay, cool.
It's off, you know? And like, I'll keep pointing out, these wonderful builders are not taking care of the property as it is. You really think that they're going to hold down to the level of the wall that they want 27 units? Oh, no, that's going to change again. They're going to want more. They're going to try to squeeze every blood that they can get out of all of us here because that's our community. It's just not fair. I don't understand how this can happen. And the whole thing about closing that, I didn't know about this. I'm glad I have the power. I'm disgusted. Like I said, I've been here 20 years. I don't know if it's fair. You know, you can't cross the street, you can't do anything. As people were saying, little trivial things, and it's three inches this way, you can't fix your, you know, fix your garage or whatever it is. And you're worried about that. But you don't think about the bigger issue, which is these people are coming in and basically invading Flower Park and doing things that is going to detriment to our community or our way of life. Why is that so important for them to get what they want? Why is that so important for them to get what they want? I don't understand, I don't get it, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, and that's why everyone's here, we're all complaining because it's not fair. None of this is fair, it's almost like they're slap wounds in the face, and thinking, it's okay, you know, they have deeper pockets, and they're bringing this money into floor park. So really, is that all counts, all worth it counts of money? You know, there's bigger things than money in this world. There's life, you know, and how we live it. This is not happening anymore. So I'm just curious, who did they pay off to get this? That's the way that you, that you all, that you all, that you did, give us the information. I live on Lily Street. Do you know three houses are technically on Lily Street? Do you, you're making a right? Two, two freaking bloody houses. I never got a notice, I didn't know about it. You know, the house on the corner of, does that belong on Lily? It's a Carnation address. So my name is on my subscription office, and it's at, what, 200 yards?
Feet.
Feet? How is that possible? Something of this magnitude should have been blasted out to the entire neighborhood.
I just don't agree with that.
Yeah. So listen to us, all of us, don't sit there and ignore us. It's like, you know, that's their squad of B, you know, it doesn't help.
Mr. Cattatore?
Hi, I'm Matt Cattatore, 77 Elizabeth Street, Floor Park. I come here tonight on a different topic. Mr. Mayor, the Village Board, I'd like to be head of the Floor Park American Legion. Thank you. And also to advise my fellow residents here at Floor Park that we are resuming our traditional Memorial Day parade and Memorial Day observance on Monday, May 30. The parade will assemble. Yeah, thank you for granting us the support and permission to do that along with police, fire, and public records. Parade will assemble, as it traditionally had, on Elizabeth Street. It'll commence at 10:00 a.m. It takes a traditional route, which basically is north on Lane Field to Jericho. Left on Jericho, proceed where both the American Legion and Floor Park Fire Department will pour us the red honors of the Gavanna Memorial, which is adjacent to the Alliance Firehouse. Then proceed to South Tyson, make the left nut side of South Tyson, the other side of South Tyson, make the right at the Harison. Proceed straight, make the left nut to Tulip, come underneath the L I double R overpass, and then proceed down Tulip. Our parade grand marshal this year is Mr. Leonard Ginger. Mr. Ginger will celebrate his 101st birthday next month. He is a... He is a resident of our village. We did invite him back in 2019, before the pandemic, to show you his resilience, his climate at that time, to take the trip and to be recognized by the United States and its allies at the 75th anniversary of Normandy, back in 2019. Mr. Ginger is not just a combat veteran of the Second World War. He landed with the United States Army's 29th Infantry Division at Omaha Beach on the early morning hours of June 6, 1944, E-Day. His awards and decorations include the coveted United States Army Combat Infantry Badge, the Bronze Star for Lead for Battle, which signifies heroism in combat, and two Purple Hearts. Even after being combat wounded and medevaced, he eventually returned to the fight, where he was eventually, with the other Allied soldiers, took part in the surrender of Nazi Germany to the United States and its allies. And returned home as a Staff Sergeant in the Army. We are in the process of inviting, and have received notifications, for example, from our scout organizations, Royal Girl Scouts, Floor Park Memorial Band, our Little League, John Louie, just to name a few. In terms of public recognition, it's also a time to honor our Gold Star families, which are specifically the families of those that have made the ultimate sacrifice. There are at least four local families right now that will be in attendance, and they will all be honored with a presentation of cade flowers, behead of the Floor Park Women's Book. In terms of getting the word out, realizing people use different ways of communicating today, it has been advertised since your approval letter in Four Little Studios, which is channel 18 on Optimum, channel 22 on Verizon. One of our younger veterans, who is a Facebook user, has put it on the local Floor Park Facebook page, or I'm not on Facebook, but my youngest son is, and he hooked that in for me, and he gave me a thumbs up, he said it was good. Newsday will also run it in their week-end Memorial Day edition. In addition to that, the U-High Park Caravan will run it in their Friday edition prior to Memorial Day. We'll also be placing flyers, asking the merchants, especially on Tulip, to put flyers in their windows to advertise it. And it's our hope that possibly, because of Mr. Ginger's presence, that possibly News Channel 12 would have the time to cover the story. The parade will be followed by the ceremony. The ceremony commences in front of a Lady of Victory, the event's will hold Memorial Park at 11:00 a.m. The ceremony will follow its pre-pandemic traditional format. The ceremony lasts about 45 minutes. It includes, obviously, advancement of colors, indication, meditization, our national anthem, our POW and MIA remembrance. And we've asked Mr. Ginger to be our new speaker, and we'd be very honored if you presented your mayoral Memorial Day remarks at the ceremony. And then with that, the ceremony will also include the presentation of memorial wreaths. So with that being said, Mr. Commissioner, I'll be in touch with your office to make an appointment, to get together with you and your officers regarding the protection and traffic control, which was sincerely appreciated, thank you. And Public Works also, I'll be in touch with the items needed, and smoke agreement online with the Fire Department, and I'm looking forward to getting a cup of coffee, trying to open my hands on this street. With that being said, I would ask all of my fellow residents, please pass the word, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, especially for the younger people, to see a man who actually, and he'll be the first to tell you, he's not a hero. The heroes are the men who never came back and made a meeting like tonight possible, where we have freedom of speech, free of consent. Please pass the word, and we look forward to a great showing, and I don't want to jinx it. So all we'll say is that, in the event, we have weather that doesn't like us, and resulting, because if it's severe thunder or lightning, we take everyone's safety into consideration, and you have the Castle Parade. There still will be a ceremony at the Floor Park American Legion at 15 Elizabeth Street starting promptly at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you for all the work you've done the last two years of teaching traditional art and the extra work you've done in this street to get it back, I think, sounds like where it is today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll, I'll send out an email tomorrow and some of the other topics we previously discussed.
Okay, thank you. And who else is here in the little hall?
Oh, I have one more.
Yes, Shrub.
So clearly, you've heard the opinion tonight, particularly when I was here. I know John Louie is one of the best, if not the best, village attorney, representative of the village in the world, national, from the Southern County. And so, maybe it, depending where we are, I know we had one bite at the apple, and we failed miserably at showing up to be able to present our opposition to this. I work in a litigious society, and normally I have trouble, I go to the sixth floor, and I sway the problem, and never did this age here, there's nothing we can recover. But I'm just not, you know. So, so we always reach for ways to protect our interests and our rights. I invite all of you, as mayor and as trustees, to think outside the box, with this representation elsewhere. We may be in the weirdest of positions to be able to look at taking an action against our own village for rules that we've already passed, but what we've heard tonight, really, is we're not acting yet. And maybe it's taking outside the box. I'm sure that when the developers think about the mom's of Floor Park lining up the red wagons in front of the driveways, so they'll use it out, they may have a different idea about whether this makes sense or not. And whether it's a PR campaign, whether it's a rest roots project, whether it's, you know, the exploration of litigation, something should want to be done to think about, that we have some more rockets.
Something is approved, right?
Yes, right, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Angel Carr, 158 Ashton Street, coming from the middle. So following what this gentleman just said, I just had a question for Mr. Ian and Ms. Marcus, because I see that you're both listed down underneath the five members of the zoning board. You're both down as zoning board members. Because I just, I just looked it up, so it just says...
Attorney.
You're the attorney?
Or the zoning board.
Okay. So being, I don't know, like, I looked it up and it said the five members, and then both of your names are listed under the fact. So just based on, like, what this gentleman had just said, and what everybody has said here tonight, and again, you know, people don't seem to be happy, didn't have their concerns heard by the zoning board. We know it's not a good cap, but it would be nice if they would have a chance to hear everything everybody said. So just being the fact that you guys were on there, I didn't know if you would be able to, you know, respectfully request, you know, another hearing with the zoning board.
Is the attorney from the zoning board, no, I can't request that hearing, but...
Okay. And then, so, and again, the reason we can't have another hearing is, it's the law, or it's not the law? I'm not sure, again.
The Village Code sets forth the procedures for a hearing, how a hearing's held, how a hearing's closed. There's also a mechanism for asking for a rehearing.
Okay.
That's in the code, but there are procedures for that, too.
Okay.
I don't think anybody here would have standing to make that kind of request, but that's up to you to read the code.
Corrective, there is a mechanism, that's why I was gonna ask you as a lawyer, like I said...
There is a procedure for a rehearing.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, if it's a law, it's a rule, so it could be a method. So there is, there's an option for rehearing.
I understand. There is a procedure for rehearing, set forth in the code.
Okay, so we have to look that up, I'm surprised. Would you be able to help with that, or?
Represent the zoning board? Yes.
Okay. Do you represent the village also, though?
The village attorney.
You are?
Right.
Is that a conflict of dimensions? In this case, it seems to be. Generally, it isn't, but in this case, it kind of is, right? Well, the village is not...
As spoken, the county trustee, trustee, I represent the board as a court.
Right.
I don't represent the citizens of the village, as, as the lawyer for all of you. I guess, yeah, as a lawyer, I'm sure.
Right. But the board was elected by the citizens, right? So you elected the board to act on our behalf, and you were their attorney, right? So I guess you guys have...
Fortunately.
I'm just wondering, if there has to be, like, the gentleman said here, there has to be maybe a way around this, because if you... But look at the rehearing, I guess, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's already, I said, it's the code, so that we can all...
Oh, do you have the codes, or do you...
The code of my head, it's split in 99, okay, it's open. Village Code, you can look it up online, E-Code.
And what subsection is it under, what title is it under?
Zoning Board.
Under hearings, or?
We can email you, right?
I'd say broadly, you look under Zoning Board, and you would put in rehearing.
Probably.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, probably.
Thanks.
Don't worry.
No worries.
Hi, I'm John, 144, you guys say what happened? Good one. I just want to point out that when a commercial developer comes with a zoning board and asks for variance, variance that allows them to double or triple the size of the reed on the settlement, it seems like we are being asked, as a town, through the zoning commission, to improve the property legally, to improve the value of the land that can then be transferred to sale with neither a, a payment of any kind of increased taxes that might go on for on the, on the property, because of, obviously, you can't assess something that's not actually built.
Yeah.
But I think we need to consider that when we're looking at large developments like this. And I'm curious to what degree that might sway the zoning commissions, the hating. In other words, if I just want the heritage from my window, and it's not gonna cost anything, any bad money, except I have to sweat the 20, if a parcel that's like a million dollars is gonna suddenly become eight or nine million dollars of taxable property that the town would then get the levy taxes, or does that change how they consider the, the presentation, or how they may dispose of that?
I don't sit on that board, I don't know if you think that consideration, my guess is, no, not that, just looking at the facts as it presented, and how it goes against what the code is and the variance being requested.
Okay, so...
I don't think they're taking into account a whole bunch of other things directly, maybe if they're...
I mean, I would imagine that part of their job is to get externalities that will be created.
Yeah, so the back of the head, they know that we improve property, which will increase the tactics.
Do we start, do we start raising their taxes by the way?
Well, once it's built, it's assessed, and...
All right, just ask, thank you.
Anyone on the Zoom?
I see the barriers, because anyone's out of the control of the LLC, which...
I don't, I do not know the principles of that, and I don't know if we would be able to get into that.
Free, let me, free...
Freedom of access. Anyone else on Zoom?
I'm second for you, and I live at my valley, I've been there for 23 years. And I was not notified of this meeting on the 11th. I'm thinking, man, for setting, setting fire on the front door. I agree with all of the issues with safety at that on Carnation Avenue. I have to, I have to cross the street in the middle of the block to safely get across to get my car or red at 55, 521. It is impossible to cross at the corner, because you can't see the light during the day because of the little spots in the light, and you can't see the light to know if it's red or green. There are safety issues with that, that has been going on for years.
That's why we are looking north.
Yes. And plan by, when I lived there years ago, when they had the parties at the Sonic Temple, there was many, many accidents because of people stopping in the middle of the block. That is a big problem. Somebody gets dropped off at a party, there would be accidents all the time, I used to witness it. And now, because of the changes in the lighting at Jericho Turnpike, there's no light on red anymore, so everything backs up, and that's a big problem. In the winter, when, when they have, when there's a lot of snow, that whole right lane gets blocked off, and it's impossible to get through town. It's impossible to get out of town, we're doing activities. Now that I work from home, I have to listen to the noise every morning, honky, 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 every morning, because people are trying to make a left on Florence. This has been a big problem, it's getting worse. And I'm asking if this we can do a rehearing, because the people that live were not notified. We were not notified of this. And, and that's a procedure, and that should be, we should notify, we're asking for citizens, because we live in a color. Thank you.
I know a lot of comments were made on existing conditions, and I'd like to please, because if you did, you know, looking to addresses, and sorry for the race tonight, you know, that whole circle, and I know you... And I know you passed it.
We're on that all the time.
Thank you. And else, here in the little hole? Anyone else something? All right, thank everyone for coming out. Thank you for your time, appreciate your comments. And we will consider everything. And, you know, please pay attention to the A O P meeting. If this is approved, it will be one of those nights when we will know why. And we'll do our best to try to get the person out there. Thank you.